Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the August 19th, 2019 Salisbury City Council Work Session. We have with us on the phone today April Jackson, who could not attend in person. And April, welcome. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay. We're good to go. With that, we've got quite a few items on the agenda. And first up is approving a MOU and budget amendment to appropriate funds just received from the Wycomico County Health Department. You're not Chief Toll, but you're Chief Gladwell. Come on up.
So, we're here this evening to discuss the MOU between the Salisbury Fire Department and Wycomico County Health Department referencing the Safe Stations Budget Amendment. You guys should have a copy of the MOU, and I'll read to you an email, or I'll read from an email that Chief Toll sent to Julia earlier, and it references the Safe Stations Program. And it's a 24-hour service that provides service to people who are looking for drug interdiction, or have something along that lines, alcohol interdictions. They realize that they have issues, they want to fix it, they want to reach out on their own. So through the County Health Department, they've received grant funding, and that will, I say it's grant funding, it's from, funding from the Midshore Behavioral Health Incorporated for Safe Station Program. It's a 24-hour service, again, it's going to help those people who are seeking treatment for recovery. What happens is, they go there, the individual that's looking for the treatment goes to the Safe Station, this is located over behind on Weaverly Drive. They show up, the, a member of the COAT team contacts, will be contacted, and then they reach out through another understanding that the Health Department has with Central to call the non-emergent number. The Central will dispatch an EMS unit in a non-emergent manner, it has its own EMD code, and will respond, just to simply take vitals, take a, give a quick once-over, give a quick check, and determine whether or not the individual that is at the Safe Station may or may not actually need to go to the emergency room. If they do, we'll transport them appropriately. If they don't, we'll get a, sign of refusal, and allow them to move forward with the, with the treatment program. However that works, that's, that's not from our end. So, how, as it works, our, our part is that we respond, the, the response, again, will be a non-emergent response. If an emergency occurs while the unit is responding to go get the vital signs and do the, just a quick wellness check, that unit may be diverted, and the Health Department has an understanding that it may take some time for another unit to get there. But again, these people should be, the premise is that they should be with it, they should be, they should not need any medical care. So at that point, we'll do our thing, and the, the Department will invoice the County Health Department per quarter, $2,500 per quarter, and that, that funding is going to be used to offset equipment and medical, whatever we use, whatever we do, to provide treatment to the patient, or to do the once-over.
Okay.
So it's pretty, it's a pretty simple process, but yet it'll provide, you know, they're seeking treatment, give the, the Health Department a baseline, you know, give them an idea that those people, there may not be anything, they may need transport. You know, our, our clinicians, our providers will determine that need, and then, you know, move forward accordingly, so.
Any other questions from Council? You have consensus?
Yes.
Okay. April?
I promise you, it's the easiest thing I've done today.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Good to see everybody.
Appreciate it.
Have a good evening.
You too. Next, we have DID Director Amanda Pollak, and we had a little bit of a presentation. Okay. How are you?
Hey, good afternoon, great, thank you.
How are you doing?
Good, thanks.
Want to introduce Michael Dunmire. He's been our Sustainability Intern for the summer. The city was fortunate to host a Maryland Municipal League, Maryland School of Public Policy Intern, or Fellow this summer, at no cost to the city. It's the first time MML has had a Fellow on the Eastern Shore, so we're very thrilled to have had Michael here all summer. His internship was for 300 hours, and his goals were to research and develop sustainability and resilience goals for the city of Salisbury. As part of that, he met with every single Department Head, and has specific goals for each department in the city. So I've included his full report in your package, but he's going to summarize that in a presentation today. Feel free, please, to interrupt with any questions as we go. And in addition to Michael being here, the rest of our Sustainability Team is here. Behind us in the audience is Alyssa Massey, our Sustainability Coordinator, and then also Lisa Howard, who is our new AmeriCorps rep for Sustainability. She'll be starting with us next week. So I'm going to turn it over to Michael. Yep, everything's working. Okay.
Thank you, Amanda, and of course, thank you to the Council and everyone else for your time and attention. I'm going to try to breathe, be as brief as possible to a lot of time for discussion if needed. We're going to start out with a rundown of what I'm going to discuss. I'm going to give a brief introduction to exactly what sustainability and resilience is. I'm then going to give a brief overview of the sustainability goals for the more broad aspects for the city, and then really get more into the weeds for departmental analyses, since that's where a lot of the meat of this report is. All right, so sustainability and resilience can often be confused in different ways. They're often seen as interchangeable, or separate for different reasons. Sustainability is specifically meeting the economic, social, and environmental needs, often into the future, without compromising those. And at the same time, resilience is often our adaptive capacity to different stressors, both in an acute way and in chronic analyses. So, for the sake of this report, we want to look at exactly how our response capacity and our sustainability chronic stressors converge to create a resilient city. These are the three characteristics that often underlie what a catastrophic event is. When you have an inadequate response capacity that's paired with those myriad chronic stressors, all it takes is one acute shock event, such as a hurricane, or an economic crash, to cause a disaster. We saw this in Hurricane Katrina, New Orleans, when you had an inability to respond, or at least a lack of preparation to respond, with those underlying socioeconomic issues that were unaddressed. So, when you have those two parts of the, of that Venn diagram that we can control, the myriad chronic stressors and the inadequate response capacity, those are the two characteristics of a vulnerable city. When you address those things, and you have sustained systemic strength and an abundant response capacity, that's when you have a resilient city. That's really what these goals try to address. The City Resilience Framework is considered a best practice standard for meeting these goals. It was developed by the Rockefeller Foundation, it's used by the 100 Resilient Cities Initiative, and it really covers the, the wheelhouse of all the things that a good municipal government should look at. It's divided into four categories, one being health and well-being. Let's just make sure that Salisbury is meeting the basic needs of the community, being in access to food, access to shelter, water, and the like, making sure that we're supporting diverse livelihoods and employment, to make sure that people are being able to self-sustain without necessarily relying on the government. And lastly, that we're ensuring public health services, be them emergency, or day-to-day medical services, and mental health services, that uphold a good productive population. For the Economy and Society Division, we have the fact that a resilient Salisbury should promote a cohesive and engaged community. We should be ensuring social stability, security, and justice, and fostering economic prosperity. This involves making sure that we have a shared collective identity of Salisbury, of residents of Salisbury, you know, for example, with our branding that makes sure that we are proud to live in the city, as well as making sure that we know who our neighbors are, that we have those strong community connections that often underlie a strong response to an emergency. Also, obviously, making sure that we have strong communications with our police, and strong relationships with our first responders. And of course, when we have a diverse and vibrant economy, we're able to sustain growth, and of course, be more resilient to economic shocks. For the Infrastructure and Environment Division of the framework, we have the fact that resilient Salisbury enhances natural and constructive assets. This involves both ecosystem services and what we build, our built infrastructure in particular. Making sure that we're ensuring the continuity of critical services, such as water and electricity provision, and reducing any risks that might be applied to those. And of course, providing for reliable communication and mobility. Without those, our population is extremely vulnerable to different hazard events, especially natural disasters. And lastly, the leadership and strategy is more, more theoretical in nature, but it's also just as important. A resilient Salisbury should promote a leadership and effective management. They should empower a broad range of stakeholders, and they should foster long-term and integrated planning. This involves making sure that our decision-making is transparent to the public, that it's easy and accessible to all the population, both who are digitally literate and otherwise, to contact the city and get their questions answered, and to make sure that we're having informed decision-making in our planning processes, that's based on the best available science and technology. So incorporating those goals into our departmental analyses, I'm going to give suggestions and observations that I've had from my meetings with the different Department Heads, and again, I'm more than open to questions as they come along. Salisbury Fire Department is fantastic, for lack of a better word. They do service areas beyond the city, and that's fantastic because of their great response time. They often do maintain fires within their room of origin, at a great percentage of the time. However, when they're often asked to service areas outside of the city, particularly in fire service areas, without sufficient compensation, it can hinder our ability over time to respond to those well enough. Particularly when we have multiple response capacity to be called into question as well, especially during extreme hazard events like natural disasters, it's important that we provide staffing that is beyond what is adequate for, say, one or two calls, so that way our, our firemen and our emergency medical technicians can respond to calls multiple at a time, as it's not unlikely that that'll happen. As for who we should draw that hiring from, we do have a robust pool of volunteers that are already receiving some overheads, such as benefits, equipment, and training, that ideally would be optimal candidates that we've already put some investment into. We should also make sure that we're providing dedicated funding for scheduled maintenance, as this will ultimately save money as opposed to a reactive fix for broke-up piece of equipment. And those sort of reactive fixes shouldn't be happening when we're about to respond to a call, as the costs of not being able to respond in a timely manner most likely going to outweigh whatever scheduled maintenance costs we'll have. We should also try to improve access to non-emergency medical services in the community. If you have patients that are often facing non-life-threatening symptoms, or honestly just confused about the symptoms they have, and they're calling 911 and bringing ambulances out to those populations, we're reducing our ability to respond to other emergency events, and we're putting a strain on public resources, and incurring medical expenses on people that don't need to spend that much money on an ambulance trip. So extending those resources through, for example, housing and community development and other communication outreach is just as important as the emergency response. We should also attempt to increase elevated water storage as we look at our water infrastructure in the future, especially if that can help us improve the continuity of our fire services during outages, as that extra water pressure that's used by our fire trucks is extremely helpful, especially when power might go out. And lastly, the region could benefit from a modernized communication system. Although we do have radios for the region specifically used by Salisbury and the surrounding counties, having a, a more centralized and modernized system could improve those disaster responses, especially when you have, for example, hurricanes or other events that do not just affect Salisbury. Moving on to the Police Department, the number-one stressor on the Police Department is the opioid epidemic, as it does continue to use community resources, as it is driving some degree of our Part 1 crimes. And of course, the human threats that are involved with that can't be understated. Community trust is a huge component of this, as trying to get volunteers to come and receive help and receive addiction treatment is going to be a crucial part of that. So working with the Community Affairs Unit and expanding their activities, as well as any activities that are run through housing and community development, are going to be crucial in maintaining this. This will also help maintain our public trust in the police, which, again, when you have crisis scenarios and communication is limited, when you have volunteered information from communities, you're going to have better outcomes. And lastly, we can make, we have to make sure that we're maintaining and recruiting the best possible police officers. That's not supposed to be a dig at any current police officers, just to say that our current officers are very highly qualified because of their Maryland State certifications. That makes them very prime hiring candidates for other agencies throughout the state. And if we're making sure that we're focusing on a steady career ladder, and strong salaries, and a strong emphasis on officer well-being, both physical and mental, they'll have more of a reason to stay here and be a part of the community. Another core aspect of public safety, which I believe is just as important as the other two that we've discussed so far, is information services, as they really do provide that digital backbone to all city functions. As we've already started to see in recent years, Salisbury's growing population has made it more of a target for digital attacks, which not only impede our service provision, but also can cost us money if there's a ransomware involved. That being said, existing protections and response, response capacity are in good condition. We do have a lot of skilled and caring staff that are at information services, but we could improve that if we were to hire more dedicated response staffing, ones that are solely used for responding to these crises as they come up, and also purchasing software that can detect those sort of brute force attempts and suspicious activities within our networks. They can also contribute to our sustainability and resilience planning, as the GIS Division can be used more intensely for risk exposure analyses and needs assessments. Obviously, that might need to be funded on a case-by-case basis, depending on the needs of the different departments, but in particular, I really do believe that we can use that in our Infrastructure and Development Department. Aging infrastructure is most definitely the greatest chronic stressor on, not only our city's financial flexibility, but municipalities all over the country. Even though we do get revenues from new businesses and new houses that come up throughout the city, even as those tenants leave over time, we are left with the residual maintenance costs of those infrastructures. That being said, we have to figure out ways that we can mitigate the financial burdens as much as possible, and the best way to do that is to make sure we are minimizing the amount of times that we're breaking ground on our infrastructure, making sure that we are getting the most revenue per square foot, or per linear foot of infrastructure, however you want to measure it. We have to make sure that capital improvements involve trying to improve what is already existing in the city. Sprawl development is going to inevitably just increase those burdens that we're already incurring. So by utilizing that GIS integrated decision-making, we can definitely fit our development priorities with what our needs are, without extending farther beyond what we're capable of handling already. And for those areas that are already beyond repairs, particularly with stormwater infrastructure, if you're looking at coastal properties that are already experiencing, you know, sunny day, tidal flooding, as sea levels rise, inevitably those properties will become very high-risk, and it might be time to start looking at, for example, the North Prong Park development. How can we take areas that are already going to be a high-risk area and create community value from them in ways that are improving our water quality, improving community access to recreation, while still not subjecting built infrastructure to those sort of stormwater risks? Water Works Department also has many resilience and sustainability aspects to cover. The park plant in particular, it provides a lot of resilience benefits to the city, for the city. In particular, we have a rare and great benefit that comes with having two reservoirs to draw from. This involves both an intentional malicious attack, or a naturally occurring stressor on either of those water systems. The fact that we have two to draw upon is very valuable. It also has a strategic location in the middle of the city, in that without that, we might have to install additional pumping stations throughout. Transmission infrastructure could, could benefit greatly from increased redundancy, particularly from the Paleo Plant. Right now, we have really just one main transition route for water getting from that plant to the rest of the city. And because it is a huge capacity for water provision, and it has great water quality, it would be great if we could maintain that and increase our redundancy to minimize disruptions. To further minimize our disruptions, we should look at hiring dedicated maintenance staff, as right now, most of that maintenance is contracted out, which is not only costing us money for the fact that it's a contractor rate, as opposed to a dedicated staff, but that's also going to incentivize us doing it less frequently, which results in more reactive repairs. Again, that's just going to lead to a disruption of service, which although we're fortunate to have those two plants, it's best to have that dedicated staff that can work on both of them and save us costs over time. And lastly, the Water Works Department is facing similar talent retention issues that the Police Department is, because again, they have very valuable state permits that can get them really, especially with the, the level of certification that our plant operators have, they could go anywhere in the state. And that's extremely valuable for them, but less so for when it comes to making sure that we're keeping our, our staff members on. Continuing with our water infrastructure, Field Operations Department, in its current capacity, has great response times and the means to do so. This might change in the future as infrastructure conditions change, or as if we continue to develop and have more needs, though currently, they're in a good spot. However, for things such as routine maintenance of public spaces and sanitation activities, we are facing some chronic understaffing that has, you know, resulted from either injuries or lack of funding for additional positions, that has over time created these backlogs. We are able to respond, for example, if a park needs to be cleaned up for an event, we can do that. But this, this consistent backlog does have effects on staff morale. It almost instills a defeatist mindset where it feels like staff are always behind, they're not seeing the results of their work. This also is compounded by the fact that the career ladders within Field Operations are so specialized that there isn't always a clear path for a career. For example, a person with a carpenter position doesn't necessarily see that clear path to the head of the department. So looking at ways to increase staff, or improve staff route, Field Operations, in the long run, will make sure that we're maintaining that critical staff that we have. Housing and Community Development is an extremely important department for addressing our resilience and sustainability. Particularly, the Housing First Initiative is a fantastic program that should be expanded. Not only does it significantly improve that human vulnerability that comes with not having shelter, but it's also improving the sustainability of our public services. Again, we're not providing emergency services to people who are being left out for exposure, either to winter events, rain, and sun, when they don't have to be. And we're also, when we give these people stability and resources that they need, they're able to re-contribute back into Salisbury, or wherever else that they are moved to. And it's a fantastic program, even beyond those economic benefits, it's for the sake of human decency, it's a really, it's a worthwhile program. If we are to continue expanding that program, then we have to make sure that there is a dedicated fund for that program, as without those resources that keep people within their new homes, the, that sort of progress is very hard to come by and very easy to lose. So to make sure that those people are sustained in those positions is extremely important. Neighborhood relations can also strengthen community networks, as we talked before, especially with addressing that opioid epidemic, apologies, and doing so is fantastic, I just wanted to highlight that. And lastly, we can modernize damage assessment tools that our city inspectors are using, specifically after disaster events, as the more up-to-date and clear that information is, the, obviously, we have more information to work with, but also we can receive more thorough aid if we can inspect those damages more easily. Going to Business Development, downtown revitalization, I'd like to believe, is extremely critical for maximizing those net revenues that we talked about with infrastructure costs. Without that, we're going to continue to incur the significant burden, specifically with the ambitious improvements that we're doing downtown right now. To make sure that we can sustain the businesses there, to really give ourselves that return on investment, is critical. So, expansion of loan programs provided by the city could really help support that, specifically with startup costs, and if we can add additional criteria for addressing community needs or sustainability and resilience goals, could really also make sure that we're getting a strong pool of applicants for those loans. Although this is a Department of Infrastructure and Development program led by Alyssa, the Green Business Program is another great example of how we can leverage that private sector action, and I'd like to see an expansion of that program if possible, with more criteria and incentives expanded to include those sustainability and resilience goals. Lastly, Finance and Procurement also have very strong roles with improving our city. For the procurement side, preferential criteria for certain vendors, while it, at first glance, does seem to be a hindrance to healthy competition in a bidding cycle, it's important to understand that if you put a preferential criteria for a local vendor, or a vendor from a disadvantaged community, the economic multiplier that's generated by that tends to circulate wealth more within the city than, say, to someone from outside of Wycomico County, outside of Salisbury, or from someone at a more corporate entity. So that's something to keep in mind, that even though we don't internalize those benefits, they do circulate through the community. And lastly, and this is one that I really want to emphasize, is that while infrastructure is our greatest chronic stressor on our expenditures, the biggest stressor on our revenues is the lack of a tax differential from Wycomico County, and this is something that should really be negotiated if possible. It's, the status quo of the, of the lack of this differential is encouraging sprawl development. That's ultimately going to increase infrastructure costs, as many people who live just outside of the city are still making use of our services, making use of infrastructure, which is fine, we do want people to come to the city. However, that missed tax revenue is ultimately putting a strain on our financial resources, it's putting a strain on the environment, and to meet the sort of goals that are laid out in this presentation, and obviously, in our greater downtown and city revitalization, we're going to need those resources. If you want to reach out after the presentation, you can feel free to do so with my contact information below. I thank you very much for your time, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Oh, you can't let him off, easy.
Oh, no, we're not going to let him off. I have this couple. Go ahead.
No, because you may ask mine, and then I don't have to.
Okay. What's your background?
So, I'm a graduate student right now. I do have a short background.
From where?
Oh, right now, I'm studying at University of Maryland in College Park.
Okay.
I'm studying environmental policy, and I have a short background in land preservation at Eastern Shore Land Concernancy.
Okay, that's the first one. Second one. I'm going to have to see how I can phrase this. No one can dispute any of the things that you said, I don't think. I think one of the challenges that we have is that it is our responsibility to prioritize on when it comes to dollars and cents. I would love to be able to fund all this, and, you know, the tax differential would certainly help, but there's a practical side that we have to, you know, we have to look at. But I think that the data, the things that you've identified are very, very important. The one thing that, did you have any time, I mean, obviously, you spent a lot of time doing this, did you have any time at all to work with the emergency services on a county level, or anything in the relationships in between?
So I did, I was provided a lot of that background information, particularly with our hazard mitigation planning, but no, I did not manage to coordinate with those more county-level or regional-level entities.
Okay. Because they, they impact, they can significantly impact what happens inside the city. Would you recommend that, if we get another intern, or you come back?
Oh, absolutely.
We, we could maybe expand this a little bit, since the basic fundamental work has been done.
Yeah.
Okay. That's my question.
Thank you.
I obviously didn't ask the one you were thinking.
Where are you from? In your, if you could go back to your preferential criteria.
Oh, yes.
That one is, is always a difficult one for the table, and I'm wondering if you have any suggestions in terms of narrowing the gap between the theory of this and the practice of this? And I'll, you don't have to answer it, but I'm just, you know, we'll get a list of vendors who make A, and three of them are for out-of-town, one is from in-town, and it undercuts by 6,000, 60,000, 600,000.
Right.
They undercut what's happening here. Do the force multipliers, and I can reference about six different council people over the last 25 years who have asked this question, the multipliers in terms of what gets spent in the community, at what point can you, or MML, or the data show us that this is the amount of money, that though we approved something that was a larger cost, it was a local company, and the multipliers? Because I think if you could do that, if you could come back with something that says on this scale, for this project that Amanda brings in, or for this bid that the procurement specialist brings in, is there, is there a table you can run for us? Is there, is there some sort of algorithm? And that would definitely be out of my limits of knowing what to do then, so we would rely on that. But I would just say, if you, if you're going- But I would just say if you, if, if you're going to say to local municipalities that the force multiplier of doing something locally is much more, if we could expand on that and give us an idea of, of how we would decide as a group to take a local company that's going to do less, any thoughts?
Yeah, um, thank you. That's a great question, and it's, it's definitely where, what it often has to come down to. Unfortunately, there are a lot of algorithms available. Um, of course, they're often tailored to, for example, whatever case study you're looking at, they're tailored to the conditions of that city. There is the possibility that you could hire, um, an economics intern to look at that, um, if you wanted to have it specialized for the city of Salisbury.
Keith Corddry, we have one, we have Keith Corddry.
I don't know if I'd call Keith an intern, but, um, but no, I think that's a great idea. Um, so there are different examples of this available, um, if you look up contracting for equity, um, though I can also provide that for you all if you'd like, I can send out an email. But the, typically the best practice considered is just to codify certain criteria that are considered preferential without establishing necessarily a quota, um, because often when you establish those quotas of what percentage of our vendors have to be from within the city, that's when you start getting those tough decisions as where you want to cut your losses for, lack of a better term.
Sometimes they don't even get somebody from the city.
True.
Even provides to circus.
Yeah, right.
So I guess the other thing is would be determining what is, what is considered local.
Yeah, right.
Well, we have, we have a, uh, by policy, we have an answer to that. I mean, it, and remember that in 2014, we adopted legislation that, uh, created a local procurement preference, uh, five percent local procurement preference, which just, I mean, which does put us at that disadvantage even if they came in with the same price because they're evaluated as if their price is five percent reduced, um, which, you know, provides them an, an advantage and puts the city at a disadvantage in that we are admittedly going to pay more, but again, we're hoping those dollars circulate in the economy locally, and we do it by zip code. So you're not bound by municipal boundaries, we didn't pick Wycomico County, we didn't pick the lower, we picked 21801, 21804.
The other issue that we face as well is even when we pick one that's local, and I remember this from, from paving and curb and gutter work, is that, you know, the, the mayor, the city council person goes down the street, and we've picked a local one, and it's usually the same ones, but you find that because they are so overwhelmed with the work that they have to do in the general, what's our area? The, the big one. Our metropolitan area, that I, I was, I can hear Bill and Tom, everybody else going, well, they're in Seaford, and I would go, well, I really don't care that they're in Seaford. But I think that, that if there's some way you can help us with that. The second one was, and, and I, I don't mean to sound trite, but I'm gonna, but all my friends at MML, which are your friends at MML, if you could go back on number two and say to them the word duh, duh, until the legislature determines, and that means the chairman of the committee in the senate determines that they're not going to make the mayor and the county executive of the county where the tax differential until that changes. And now I think we're the last, correct?
We're not the last.
I think we're two.
Kent.
Kent.
Frederick fixed theirs.
They're in equity.
So until we change that at that level, until the state senate chairperson says, "I'm not going to make the mayor of the city and the county executive of the county agree to a tax differential," I say this as politely as I can, you can write another 500 paragraphs on that particular one, but certainly MML needs to know that until that changes, we just sit here spinning our wheels doing the same thing, but thank you for the, thank you for the reminder that we need that.
On tax different, if I may, on tax differential, um, uh, our, uh, friend to the east, uh, Mayor Rick Meehan of Ocean City, who's brought suit against Worcester County, uh, is convening a collective of, um, the mayors from Wycomico, Worcester and Kent Counties, uh, because although there is, um, a, Worcester County is a, is a, is a may county, meaning the county may provide tax differential, but is not a shall county, isn't forced to, so they're the same as us. Um, Worcester County does provide grants to all of their municipalities. Wycomico County, that does not happen, um, at all, uh, nor are we asking for it, I don't think.
I will.
I'd much rather tax differential for our citizens and taxpayers, uh, but, uh, Mayor Meehan, who's brought suit against Worcester County, is, is working very hard to, um, convene an effort to, uh, to win in court. If we can't win in the legislature, let's win in court.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions? Well done.
Thank you.
What are you doing next year?
Finishing up school and then, uh, hopefully I'll have a job.
Uh, you can go to salisbury.md/jobs. Cause we're hiring.
Yeah, I saw that city planner position and my heart sunk. No worries though, I'm not holding it against you.
It's been a tremendous summer. We've been so blessed to have Michael here, and you can see the amount of work he's done. It's absolutely amazing.
The other thing is you can see the enthusiasm.
Yes.
There's, there's people who do it for work and there's people who do it because they love it and they know what they're doing. Michael, I think is one of the ladders.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you all for your time so much.
Mr. President, can I do one more thing?
I hope so, because I was stalling till you got up there.
All right, so, uh, you know, you've gotten a taste of, of why and, and how impressive Michael is, um, but, uh, we are just blessed, um, that we've had this time with you, Michael, and, um, you know, I think, uh, Maryland municipalities are going to be better for it. Um, there's no doubt in my mind that, uh, our friends at MML and Scott and Candace and all of them are going to share this information, um, that, but Salisbury is going to benefit from it, and, uh, I'm grateful. So if you've come up here, I have a, a presentation I'd like to make. So this is a certificate of recognition presented to Michael Dunmire, um, the Department of Infrastructure and Development intern from the city of Salisbury, and it reads, "In recognition of being the first Maryland Municipal League, Maryland School of Public Policy Intern on the eastern shore of Maryland, the city appreciates your extensive efforts researching and developing broad city of Salisbury sustainability goals, meeting individually with department heads to determine feasible goals for each department in the city, signed myself on this day." And Michael, we are just so proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Can we get a quick picture? Oh, yeah. Can we get a picture of you and the council and Amanda and Alyssa?
Absolutely.
Just sliding over. Why do we take pictures of days in our shorts? The whole team.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
You guys are good tight act like.
We're going this way. Upside in.
Julia lives sustainability.
And she's cool.
Where can you get in just a minute?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael.
Cheers.
There's something to be said for youthful enthusiasm. I wish I was younger.
Can we take five and think about?
All right, next up on the agenda, we have, um, the 927 Johnson Road Annexation Agreement, and Manager Bill Holland will lead us through that.
Here's another example of someone who does their job because they love it.
That's it. We'll strike that from the minutes.
Back, uh, before you is a final, uh, step, uh, with the annexation of Johnson Road before we go to the, uh, Council for its legislative, uh, introduction of the two resolutions, it's set the public hearing date. Uh, I have with me, uh, Mr. Dirk Wooderson, who's petitioner to the property, uh, officially petitioned ahead, um, a failing cesspool and a failing septic system, property is approximately 1.7 acres, is contiguous to the city corporate lines. Uh, we did an annexation, uh, plan. Currently, there is no, um, uh, plan to develop this property. However, when that time does come, it would have to go to the, uh, Planning Commission for a comprehensive, uh, plan review and approval, uh, to go to the city's, uh, Planning Commission. It got rezoned, R8A, uh, which would be multi, it could be multifamily, which it does back up to a multifamily, uh, city neighborhood. Also, in the annexation agreement, uh, once, uh, uh, once development takes place prior to any, uh, issuance to any permits or anything, this, uh, the, uh, property owner would have to, uh, submit, uh, a check for fifteen, almost sixteen thousand dollars just to reinvestment in existing neighborhoods, uh, which should go to, uh, neighborhood beautification, street lights, code enforcement, anything to, you know, help, uh, improve existing neighborhoods. And that, that's, uh, that's pretty much it for this. As I say, it's not going to be developed, there's no plans for development at this time.
Would I tell you anything?
No, I think that says it all. I just need sewer and water.
A lot of people do. Any questions from the council?
If there was a plan to, oh, I'm sorry, April.
April?
You have something? Okay, thank you.
If there was a plan built to, to develop on, if the total is 1.77 acres, correct? What, how much could go in there?
I, I do not have that number for me. R8A, it's so many units per, per acre, and I don't, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Can you get that to us?
Yes, I can.
Um, are, are you going to subdivide it today, since there's two dwellings and there'll be two addresses?
But if he does subdivide, he has to execute a public works agreement.
And then he probably wouldn't develop a whole property.
At that point, then we'd have to issue two EDUs. That's, that's the catch, is that there's two mailboxes on one parcel. So if he does any type of planning, whether it's to put an apartment complex on there, uh, you talked about a casino, I think.
Can you speak into the mic?
Don't speak into the mic.
Or, not that one, I'm just talking about.
Not with the sustainability people still behind you.
Or, or just to improve the two existing dwellings, he'd have to execute a public works agreement because at that point in time, he would have to subdivide.
The, is there a plan for remediation? And I only ask this because I, I lived through the deepest, darkest depths of the wastewater treatment plant in, in anything in Salisbury. I always ask, even if it's perfectly good property, is there a plan for remediation?
In what sense do you mean by remediation?
Well, I, if I were to sit on the beach and talk with, as I have been, as you can tell, and talk to my mother about this, she'd go, "Why would you annex something that's got a cesspool on it, Jim?" So could you answer her question for me so that when I go back there, when I leave, I've got a decent answer?
Well, this, how this all came about, Mr. Iretan, was then I had environmental assessment done on the property through, uh, I think the Atlantic Environmental out of Easton, Maryland, and that's when they came back, and my understanding is that the one property, which I'm going to call 927, all this is 927, I guess back in the day you, you were allowed to do this, but it's the larger home, it's the one that had the failed system. The health department actually approved a system for that. It was when I went for the, the smaller property, which they call 929 for the post office.
It's one had the cesspool that's actually working, but they said that they no longer allow those, that they would have to come out. So my understanding and speaking with Mr. Barry Fippen, who I've used before in other projects, is that they would, they would be coming out once we put the new system in through the city, is my understanding. I think that would, I don't think there, I don't know if they take out the full drainage deal, but I believe the cesspool had to be renovated, is my understanding. But I don't know, is my answer, it's outside my, I missed that day of loss.
So will the two properties be re-rented? The one?
The one is rented now, there's actually a nurse from PRMC that rents the property from me. The other one is vacant because I, I couldn't, it wasn't working.
Okay.
And they're both registered, um, my stepfather relentless to me, had them both registered and all the lead paint and all that done to them.
Well, anything in the water shed's going to be better if it's on water source, so thank you.
That's my, that's my understanding.
The sustain, I want to say for the record, the sustainability people are shaking their head at what I just said.
Nodding, nodding.
They're nodding, I would shake.
Just for the.
Up and down.
My understanding is that MDE had their way, there would be nothing put in the ground. They just, they, they're not looking for septic systems in the ground. Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President, uh, just, if you, if you do the raw math, uh, in R8A, Jim, it's, it's nine is the maximum number of units you can fit, but that's not considering any other limitations that there might be. I mean, that's just the pure, right, exactly, that's the, you know, pure minimum number of square feet per dwelling unit in that zone.
And if he does develop it to its full capacity, that would affect the type of infrastructure that he would have to pay for to install it in the ground, so that'll have an impact on what his ultimate use of the property is.
So what I'll tell her is that nothing's going in the ground now, Mom.
That is correct.
That's what I shall do.
Anything else? All right, we have consensus on that. You have consent, April, you okay? Okay, thank you.
Yes, we'll schedule this, uh, to go Monday, um, at the next legislative session to have it introduced and, okay.
So 26th?
Uh, yeah.
Do you know what time?
You, does he have everything he needs?
It looks like it.
I had asked Pete to research the issue of whether that property needed to be subdivided, and I have not got a response. Has he spoken to you about it?
Not about the subdivision now.
I, I talked to MDP. MDP is absolutely okay with it having two mailboxes with one parcel. However, they brought up the same thing that I think Amanda first identified, which is that the EDUs here are going to be the, the driving force for when a subdivision will occur, because a subdivision will occur unless it is developed for multifamily, in which case, then there would just be a raising of the two existing improvements. But in terms of two mailboxes, one parcel, MDP says no comment.
All right, well, I, well, I'm really not concerned about them, I'm concerned about a city basically annexing a pre-existing non-conforming situation. So, um, a- as far as the, will, will there be a subdivision at the time of the installation of the, or the, or the, these two properties?
There will have to be.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that that's part of it, and I, we, I don't, if it's not already in the agreement.
It is.
It is in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. I just had not heard back yet on my question.
Let's make sure that everything is, still is ready to go before we get it on the agenda. So, Mark, if you can confirm that?
Oh, yeah. Tomorrow morning, I'll check with.
Okay.
What he discovered.
Good, thank you.
But I can plan for Monday, the 26th, I'll slide here to.
Yeah, unless you hear otherwise.
All right, thank you all. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
We'll now talk about, uh, Atlantic Tractor Annexation. Could your guests please introduce yourselves for the, for the record?
Um, for the record, uh, Mr. President, Sandy McAllister with McAllister D. Tarr, Shaw, Walter and Walker, uh, the attorney representing the applicant Atlantic Tractor. With me is Mel Goldsmith, to my right, CEO of Atlantic Tractor, and to my left is Craig Brock, CFO of Atlantic Tractor.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, back in February, uh, Atlantic Tractor, they petitioned the city, uh, become part of the city, uh, due to failure, again, another failing septic system. Uh, the parcel, let's see, I gotta line my notes here. Parcel's approximately five, approximately five acres, it's, uh, it's used for sale, uh, and repair of farming equipment, um, they're requesting annexation again to the city. This is the introduction, after this, it would go to the Planning Commission, had the property rezoned. Atlantic Tractor also submitted a letter to the city, um, they're requesting a waiver of the inventory tax, and for that, I want to, um, put it over to. And for that, I want to put it over to Mr. McAllister, so maybe he can explain this a little further than I can.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Members of the council, Mr. President, Mayor, thanks for having us today. I understand this is the informal discussion part of it. Back in early nineteen, January and February, Atlantic Tractor was evaluating all the advantages and disadvantages of moving into the city. And I, I did write a kind of unusually detailed letter to the mayor, just in the expectation that we were actually going to move a little quicker to finalize this. Now, for a variety of reasons, and I can only applaud Mr. Holland, he's been great, but it's only recently that we were able to finalize a couple of the criteria to get before you. So although it's been a few months ago, the only corrections is Atlantic Tractor tells me they now have thirty-four full-time, or thirty-seven full-time employees. My letter said thirty-four, with an average salary of in excess of fifty-five thousand dollars. Now, Atlantic Tractor is deeply rooted in the community, you don't have to wonder what's going to happen. It's the same business that the Tyndles operated for many years, and it, it, it is a key component of the eleven facilities that Atlantic Tractor has in the region. City of Salisbury is obviously very important. So it, it became a concern in early discussions to find that, given the magnitude of agricultural inventory that might be subject to tax, we wanted to raise this issue because being a regional provider of agricultural equipment, it, it, it's difficult to assess expansion opportunities in jurisdictions that do tax inventory. Now, I, I'm not an expert on the tax structure in Salisbury. Some people have suggested that there is sympathy for phasing out the inventory tax. Some people have told me anecdotally that some car dealers and, and Atlantic Tractor share this concern, because under the analysis, it, it is quite possible for Atlantic Tractor in a routine year to have millions and millions in inventory, given the expense of equipment. The example I took in this letter that I believe you've been provided, just took the, the tax returns from two thousand seventeen and extrapolated four hundred ninety-seven thousand in parts and three point four million in equipment for an inventory evaluation of under, just under four million. And just applying the tax as it's currently on the books, which is in fact waivable as a matter of law, would result in somewhere north of forty to fifty thousand on an annual basis. Now, good news is, that's a nice lug of cash for the citizens of Salisbury to enjoy, but it, it tilts the scale, given that the other locations for Atlantic Tractor that also have significant inventory aren't subject to that tax. Now, the natural consequence of having eleven facilities, ten of which do not pay inventory tax, and right now Wycomico County does not currently impose such a tax. So it's, it's, it would be a new economic issue for the company. Now, so, nobody wants to pay more, that's clear, and, and municipalities, as we just heard with the sustainability report, are always looking for revenue. So it, it, it's a concern because attracting and retaining good local businesses is obviously a goal of Salisbury and any municipality looking to be vibrant and successful. So, how does this work? One of the good things about expanding in an, in an annexation context, to bring a business from outside city limits to within city limits, is of course to, to, to cement that relationship. Atlantic Tractor is trying to evaluate its long-term goals. It currently leases that building and it doesn't own that building, it leases it from a different ownership, and it's, it's, it's an economic analysis we're undergoing. Now, all of our consultants have indicated that the best thing to do is to tap into Salisbury. And, and I think everybody, I mean, I'm, I'm from Cambridge, we have forty thousand EDU capacity, and people always want to tap into it, and I understand Salisbury's in that same circumstance with a lot of people looking to, to take advantage of, of municipal sewer. We think that it's, it's probably going to continue rather than lessen. And, and the question I have, my firm has, and, and it's, it's come to the fore with Atlantic Tractor, is how do we sort of make it a viable alternative for businesses? It's, it's one thing to say, I'll subdivide someday in the future, it's another thing to say, there's an immediate fifty thousand, that's like a full-time, a full-time employee salary that's layered on. And the problem with that is, as I think most people can appreciate, margins in agricultural equipment are, are skinny. The more expensive the piece of machinery, and some of it's very expensive, the more narrow the margins. Any tax of this sort is just layered on and has to be passed through. If it's passed through to the local agricultural community, and all they have to do is go to Laurel or Seaford or Snow Hill or Pokomoke or Cambridge to buy that equipment, for not a lot of percentage incremental add-on, it, it, it makes it a little, a little less competitive. And as any of you in the agricultural business can appreciate, farmers are no more different than the rest of us, and they're looking for the best deal on what is essentially a John Deere piece of equipment. And, and it would not, I think, enhance the Atlantic Tractor regional footprint to have the largest city and the largest facility to be at a competitive disadvantage. Now, that's a lot of words. It basically boils down to current inventory levels are higher than in seventeen. So the hypothetical is actually on the lower end of what that tax consequence would actually be. So, on page three of the letter to the mayor, we identified the section in the Salisbury City Code, section three point oh eight point oh three oh, that provides for the business stock property, which was not a phraseology I was accustomed to, I think it's inventory, equipment and, and parts, would be subject to the property tax of point zero two four percent on forty-five percent of the assessed value. That's where we, we, we got the number. It's, it's a, it's a big number, fifty-plus thousand. It's not a number that's being cannibalized from current revenues, it's not a number that has historically gone to the county, it's just new tax. It's the position of Atlantic Tractor that it, it, it is impactful, it would move the needle, and it's something they very much would like you to consider waiving or, or implementing a gradual scale waiver, given what, what we think is, it is probably the most anti-business, if you're trying to attract business into the community. I don't believe you will be the last to point it out, there are a number of large, big-box vacancies that are in city limits that we're encountering some interest, and trying to explain this inventory tax to prospective repurposing of those properties is, is, is becoming an issue. This is the first I've had to actually bring to your consideration. So, on that basis, I did meet with the mayor, who invited me to put it in writing so he could share it as appropriate throughout the process, and Mr. Holland has been very, very, very accommodating in getting us to this point. I know Salisbury is business-friendly as a rule, and we hope you'll seriously consider this. It, 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 it may be sufficient over time to impact the commitment locally, just for obvious reasons, inventory can be held in one of the ten other facilities, and we would rather have the largest city on the eastern shore, have the largest agricultural presence and inventory to boot. And we're here to answer any questions, but it's that simple, I think.
I have a couple of questions, but I think the mayor's going to have to help me.
Okay.
What's the revenue or the total inventory collected in the city, roughly?
I don't know, I wasn't prepared to answer that, but I can tell you our personal property tax in total amounts about five million dollars. So, you know, manufacturing, equipment, inventory, other personal assets combined equal that. So, you know, you didn't ask me to editorialize, but I'll take the opportunity while I've got the mic. Giving that up would require a retraining of our entire services rendered and our whole budget. So, it's, it's not a simple conversation, we'd have to ask, are we willing to let crime rise and cut police officers? Are we willing to have fewer firefighters? Are we willing to sell pieces of fire equipment? I mean, it, that's a lot of money.
It was, it was, it was sort of rhetorical, because I, I think the, the question really is, I'm glad you're going to CFO, because if I was, if, when I was running my business, you have to have an offset and see what happens.
Right.
My phone, his phone, his phone, April's phone, if we go along with this, would get phone calls from every business that is now paying this in the city. As the mayor just said, we have to offset it somehow. There's only two ways we can offset. One is reduce services, because there's no other way of collecting it. The only taxes we have are the ones that the mayor just alluded to. I would have an issue with it. Doesn't mean that I, there can't be a case made, but personally, I, I have an issue with it.
So, Mr. President, if I can, I, I thought you were asking me a question about our, our budget and the comments we heard Mr. McAllister make about the, the inventory tax in context of our revenue. I have a different perspective on the question at hand. My perspective on the question at hand is not whether or not we should give up our inventory tax.
No, I'm talking specific waiver.
Right, although I would agree with, I would agree that long-term, I'd like to not have an inventory tax. The county was able to do away with theirs, as has every other county in the state of Maryland. Municipalities, some of us still have an inventory tax, but we still have ours, and right now it's an important part of our revenue. The different, the difference is, and I don't know if Mr. Sullivan's still here, the different, who has done some research on this, is that the question of, of annexation based on need, a water and sewer issue, or a septic system failure, is one of, I think, legitimate urgency. This is not the only time we're going to hear this, we're going to hear this a lot over the coming years. And I think finding ways to pragmatically address those problems is one where they, my stand on principle, your stand on principle, you know, each of our stand on principle might have to evaluate the situation on a case-by-case basis. And perhaps the answer is not a wholesale, you know, one-time, one-instance, or one-off elimination of collection of the inventory taxes for a property, that's what's on the table right now. Maybe there's compromised positions that I haven't thought about. But the issue here, I think, is that the alternative is not, they don't connect and don't annex, because I think that, I think you have to. I think that's unfortunately the cards that have been dealt because of the failing septic system and limited ability to address that through another septic system. I mean, this is the solution that's available. So the question is instead, what happens if there is no way for them to justify making their business there in that case? Or, worse yet, I think, or maybe not worse yet, but not good for us, is a removal of the inventory? And can you picture?
I can tell you one question is, isn't there a difference between your personal property tax and your inventory tax?
No. The, the inventory is a portion of the.
Of the personal property tax.
Of our collection, yeah.
Which is your equipment that run the business, whether it's computers, whether it's, you know, whatever you're using that the business owns. And then there, then there's a tax on the stock, which is what we're selling. That's the way that it read.
I was going to delve into those numbers, like you just, like you just suggested. So I have a series of questions for you. Do you know how much it would cost to fix the septic system? The county has deemed it not.
Sorry.
Do you have any idea how much that is?
Well, we don't have specifics, and, and the reasoning for that is, it was perceived to be not worth re-engineering, given the, the, I forget the phraseology, the expansion area, the comprehensive plan seemed to contemplate moving city services eastbound, and so the idea was that would make more sense. This was prior to learning about the economics that might accompany.
Okay. All right, so we don't know how much that costs, because I, I'm starting a spreadsheet in my head that might be able to say, if it costs that much, maybe we could offset it for a certain period of time. But since we don't know that, we know that the, that the tax credit that you want are the, is forty-two thousand eighty-seven dollars, that, based on your.
That would have been the tax applied in two thousand seventeen, it would be more in eighteen ninety.
Okay. And the property taxes on the property as it comes in, or estimated bill?
I don't have that number.
Okay, well, we don't have specifics and we don't have more numbers, so we're getting, then let me ask this question, since we don't have either of those two numbers, because it's very simple to go online and print up John Deere profit margin. It's very simple to do that. I can quote those numbers for you if you like, I have them right here. But I know that because you are a local dealer and because of family members who own John Deere ownerships in New Jersey, I've never heard my cousin say that he ever made any money. Never heard him say it. So do you know what your profit margin is? Not specifically, this is how much we made on each, it just, do you have any idea? I'm trying to get a, because the male alluded to it, but he's very kind and generous and much more articulate than I am. What happens is a business is going to say to us, well, we'll just move this somewhere else.
Correct.
And we don't want that, but I also want you to know that the police officers in the fire department, to get to you, to get out that, and we say it's, it seemed, it didn't seem that far, it seemed a long, way far away a long time ago, but now it's right there. That tax differential that the sustainability people were talking about, when I call Barbara Duncan and I say, somebody just called me from Lincoln Avenue and wants to know if we can get a cop there, and she says, the two that I have in Sector One is on John Deere Drive, and now we go all the way out, and, and we've made it so it's impossible to, to make houses out by Warwick, we've made it, but simply we have to serve that area as well. So I'm of the mindset that I could support a, a one-time, a one-time thing, simply because they don't want you to leave. But I can't pull up the profit margins for John Deere, the John Deere Company, and tell you what they made in the last quarter of nineteen, of two thousand eighteen, and what they made for the entire year, and convince my mother, any more than that cesspool that's in the back of that house on, on, on Johnson Road is going to be taken care of. So if we could get some more numbers, because I think this is, this is going to be the perfect, because this isn't manufacturing, so they're not going to be able to come from with the, who does, who does this? Manufacturing tax exemption?
Laura.
Laura. Laura Kordakowski isn't going to be able to come to us and say, John Deere submitted this, and this is what they have, and this is the, the break that we're going to be able to give them, because if we have that, we might be able to, to offset it. So I'm just wondering if the numbers might be available to help us make a decision.
That makes one issue. The other issue is, which comes first, the cart of the horse?
Well, you've got to go flush the John. I mean.
No, I know, but what I'm saying is, if, if they're, if it's an all, if they say it's all or nothing, either I get it or I.
Right.
Move it. All right, then you can't, we're not going to put in the.
The time to get all this information if it's going to be. So I would say, Mr. McAllister, I think what city council president is sort of indicating that you may need to go back and say, if we could come up with a formula, are you, are you still interested?
Well, I, I think the other thing is, we, I'd like to hear what the recommendation is from the mayor, mayor's office, relative to this topic.
Mr. President, before then, may I answer? Mr. President, before then, may I answer some of these questions? It, it, it bears mentioning that a single combine, a piece of inventory, is about a half a million dollars. We're not talking about widgets, we're talking about millions and millions, perhaps as much as eight-plus million, in inventory. I have no idea what the profit of, of John Deere is, that's probably not as important as the profit of Atlantic Tractor, because John Deere's gonna be just fine, with or without a waiver. But Atlantic Tractor has to consider whether it can compete on that level. Now, that's the same, I was the city attorney for Cambridge for a decade, I, I understand that standard operating procedure. But I think it's safe to say that if, if a facility moves six or eight hundred yards east and can avoid fifty, sixty, seventy thousand in your taxes, it's gonna realistically consider that option. If it has ten other stores within a twenty-to-forty mile drive circling Salisbury, it would be somewhat foolish not to consider those options. We're certainly not suggesting that we ought to invert the Salisbury tax base, but I would point out that an existing business has a very clear tax, track record regarding services. When you say, do we not have police, do we not have fire, do we not have EMS, do we not build schools? That applies in many instances. It's a pretty theoretical increase in services relative to an existing business of this type in this location, who will in fact pay other forms of taxes for the modest service that it requires. But it sounds good, of course. I don't know the breakpoint. Hopefully, we're nowhere near it, it depends, but it, it, it doesn't make sense to me to want to attract new business. If I had business in town, I would certainly like the benefit of not paying it anymore, but Atlantic Tractor doesn't pay it now. So, if they can come up with a way to continue to not pay it, they're gonna pursue it.
No, I would too.
Sure.
I totally understand.
The question, and honestly, this goes back to Mr. Dungmire's presentation, where's the table that says, this local needs this? And to be honest with you, I appreciate, and I'm not trying to outlawarder you, and God, I love when lawyers come in, and I love it, because you're just quick and you talk fast, and if you go across the street, then you gotta move, and those fifty-seven jobs are still the same people who live here. So, I'm still not, I still wanna get back to what's it cost to flush the Johns, because that's what you can't do, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, how I can help the company, whether it's one way or another, or somehow, or a formula. But I think we have, I think the council president has to be supported in this particular. You need to go back and find out, if you get none of this, if you're going, need to tell us now, because at some point, this county's gonna tell you, you can't flush, you can't, you can't turn the water on, you can't do anything like that.
Yeah, and I think, I don't, I don't mean to sound, I'm not anti-business, trust me, I was in business for forty-five years, fifty years. But to your comment, and I accept, nothing you said I can really fight with, except that I can go and say to you, all the other sites, their Atlantic Tractor sites, we don't provide services to them.
Right.
We don't have any expense with that. We do if, if you get annexed, and that's the struggle I have in my head. We sit here every year, and, and people don't understand, when it comes down to the point, and I've sat here for five years, and I, and you sit down and you say, can we afford to have one more firefighter? That's what it comes down to. That's, those are the discussions we have.
Mm-hmm.
And they all come with, and everybody comes, every department comes asking with their wish list, and their CIPs, and all the rest of this stuff, and we have to make a decision, who gets what. That is not easy. And we take it, I personally do, and I know these guys do, they take it extremely seriously. So, yes, it's forty thousand dollars, doesn't seem like a lot. That's a starting cop. That's one cop, starting salary.
Almost.
Almost, it's forty, forty-six.
That's right.
Forty-four, something like that.
But the other option, if, if, if that's too much, is what about just connecting to city water and sewer?
It's illegal.
It's illegal, they can't.
It's illegal.
They can't, they...
Not anymore.
About him?
Nope.
He can't do it.
No, can't do it anymore.
Not allowed by city charter.
Well, I...
I'd like to find a solution.
Well, in, 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 in some annexation problems in Dorchester County and failing systems, we've expanded beyond municipality, and the state has approved it, and we've monetized the access to sewer all the way down to Church Creek and heading down to Madison.
It's, it's legal under Maryland law, it's just not legal under Salisbury law.
Right. So, you can do it, you just haven't chosen to do it.
Our, our forefathers chose not to do that anymore.
Mr. President, just one, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see us fighting windmills, but has the, has Atlantic Tractor researched the issue of Salisbury's authority to waive those taxes? Because state law specifically authorizes a manufacturing exemption, but I'm not sure this would be authorized, and I'm not sure that we can waive taxes that are not authorized to be waived.
Our research suggests you absolutely can.
All right, have you supplied that to the city?
No.
Okay. Would you share that with me?
Well...
Then I could advise the county and save them some money.
Well, based on the kind of input to date, I'm not sure, that just, but I understand, and we'll certainly...
Yeah, no, I'm glad, that's, because I can't really advise them unless I do that research.
But we, to your point about, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a police officer or fireman, we take that, but of course, in the next five years of release, that's two-hundred-and-fifty, that's a quarter of a million to Atlantic Tractor, that's probably a lot of money as well. So, I think, given at least the feedback that I've gotten here, I think it may, Mr. Gold, you may want to, is there anything you'd like to address at this point that I haven't hit?
No, we're gonna have to take a very serious look at this, because this is gonna have a significant impact on the operations of our business, so we have to look at all options.
Well, I think Mr. Arington had requested some, some numbers. We need to get the numbers and look at them and see what...
Mr. President...
And what the options are.
Yeah, I, well, I think we, I think that's, that's the important question here, is looking at options, because, you know, the other facet of this is, this isn't, you know, this isn't even about business recruitment. This is about thirty-seven jobs in a business that is in our community, right now. And it's a, an environmental issue created not by anybody sitting at this table, it's a, a septic system issue, and again, we're gonna be facing these constantly. If, if it's a question of, of feeling like we're creating precedent or special exception, then what I would suggest is that we consider a policy to address this issue, because we're about to be asked to address a much broader policy, addressing something with respect to property taxes, which is gonna get into a whole other conversation with all of these areas around the city of Salisbury, and do a conversation with the county. And in, in that conversation is also the tax differential question, already. So, I think there's good reason for us to think about this not as precedent-setting due to the creation of a one-off solution to a problem, but rather precedent-setting by intent.
Now, you're starting to sound like a lawyer.
That's a good thing. And with, and all without, without law school debt.
City planning.
Yeah.
So, so my point, my point is, you got a, we've got a business on our border that needs help, that, one way or another, you know, we can talk about, you know, cost to replace septic system, they're coming in, they're coming in. And, and, and you look, you have, under Maryland law, you have a say in that matter, but not only does the county plan say it, the city plan says it, and right now, situation is determining it for us, for us all. And so, there's a couple ways we can go with that, you know? One, we can stand on a principle, or we can find a solution, find a pragmatic solution.
Then the other number that I'd like to see is how many places are sitting on the edge, that are manufacturers, that would come back and ask...
Or those paying inventory tax.
Or, whatever, whatever it is.
Either, both.
I don't know if there's any way, I mean, I don't, is the, I just, the forty, I mean, the forty thousand dollars is, and I'm not sure who I'm, I'm not sure who I'm talking to, because Sandy, you know, he's used to the courtroom and the judge, so he's gonna get the judge's attention, I mean, it's forty thousand dollars.
A year.
A year. And ten thousand dollars in taxes, which is what I think it is. And you gotta pay to come in, but Bill, what's that, that sixteen, is that sixteen thousand, just like the last property? Is that sixteen thousand, by the way, just to ask to come in?
That'd be worked up in the annexation agreement, which I don't have that...
Okay. Well, okay, then I'm, do you wanna take this, because I'm gonna, I don't wanna pick on Mr. McAllister, like, I mean, did he really think he was just gonna walk in and the five of us were gonna go, yeah, sure?
No, I, I just, I wanna find a solution.
Yeah.
The principle is one thing. And, and I wasn't joking.
Yeah.
There was a guy, this is, as, as I'm sitting here today, a manufacturer in the city of Salisbury came up to the, to me while I was having my bagel coffee at my office at the Bagel Bakery, and said to me, when are you guys gonna take away the inventory tax? Swear, this morning. And I, and I said to him, I gotta get an alternate, give me, give me something else.
That replaces it.
And I said, you know what? Go down the hall and tell the county exec that we need our tax differential, because we're getting, we're being dual taxed. If that were the case, I could say right now, sure, come on in, give you the, the tax break, that's fine. We're not there yet, and the part that is frustrating to me is that every time a septic system fails, which is currently their problem, and environmentally a problem as well, I'm not trying to, but to make the point, we're gonna sit here and be asked to hook up, and we're gonna pay the price.
Right. For all those people...
For all of those people, all the people who, God forbid, were gonna lose their septic systems.
Right.
And where are they coming?
Right.
How many lift stations does it have to go through from John Deere Drive to get to the wastewater treatment plant?
Please.
Glen Avenue?
Yeah, three or four, because it's Goldmore Drive.
Just trying to give you an idea of how far it's gotta go.
At least four.
At least four.
And, and it's frustration.
No, but the, but, as I mentioned, you know, by, by analogy, your town to the west, each of the circumstances where there are failed septics, I mean, we just heard one a few minutes ago, it was pretty low-impact aerobics, and we'll worry about it later, and it failed, and we're gonna bail you out, I've got that. But it, it's a different kettle of fish to say when a, a business open eight to five is not a significant generator of sewage, is subject to what appears to be a disproportionate, no, half a million dollar cars, a disproportionate burden, economic. It's not that anybody should get a free ride, but it's hard to imagine that this is an equitable treatment, that a viable business that, like most, have options, would like to be part of the community, but they have an economic burden that doesn't sound fairly allocated. It might be, but to me, eight or nine million in farm equipment paying that level of tax seems disproportionate against Atlantic Tractor. It, it is what it is, that's our view, and yeah, Mr. McAllister did expect to come in and suggest that it ought to be evaluated. Mr. Holland made it clear that the mechanism to do that was this informal exchange. I don't know how else to do it. So, the, the, the three questions that I've got is, you know, can you do a fully engineered system that satisfies the relatively modest sewage needs of the business for something less than fifty thousand a year? Well, I can assure you, we'll know that answer soon, because every ten years, that's half a million bucks, that can buy a lot of alternative sewage. We, Atlantic Tractor doesn't own the building, and it has a, a lease with a fairly upcoming termination date, so those things have to be factored in, given the commitment that it would take. Now, that's just a business decision, but the only way anybody can factor in is to hear those business decisions and assess whether, you know, okay, if, if they move, of course, your, your tax base is unaffected, and it, you know, one way or the other, and your services are unaffected one way or the other. So, we, we, I think the messaging to Atlantic Tractor is pretty straightforward, and somewhere between all or nothing, I'm sure, compromises, it might make sense. So, you know, that's the point of this exercise.
Yeah, and, and, and we will, we will go in, and we'll have some discussions about it, because I, I would like to find a solution to it, but I have to also, I wanna see what are the, for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction.
Sure.
And I just wanna make sure that we have all our ducks in a row. As a business guy, you would do the same thing. You'd come in, I'd call you in, you also say, what do you think? Is this a good move, is this a bad move? On your side, I can see your point, not a problem. On our side, I'd like to hear from the mayor and the departments, and say, okay, what are the alternatives, can we do it, and what's the risk that's, that's we're taking regarding to everyone else that's currently paying the system, and what the impact would be. So, those numbers that we asked for, we need to discuss. I mean, if we, we're not gonna, I'm not gonna go for approving the entire thing without looking into the numbers personally. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, if I may, just, just to illustrate, you know, picture on John Deere Drive, you've got a residential building or a retail business or something right there, you know, with, let's say, similar usage in terms of sewer and water, right? I mean, you've got somebody who would be paying the same sewer and water bill, the same property tax bill, assuming the building's valued at the same amount, but not paying that forty to fifty thousand dollars a year. And I think that's where the question of, you know, wait a minute, why would we want to come into Salisbury in that situation, is one that's sitting before, you know, our friends here.
What do you think?
I mean, again, like you said, I wanna see some of the other numbers to try to see what, what we can work out, whether it's something that's gradual, whether it's, you know, in that vein.
April?
Can we try to get you answers to that within the next two weeks?
Yeah.
For the next meeting?
April?
Yes.
Do you wanna see more numbers, or do you have a, a different position? Okay. Jim?
I knew this was gonna sound very odd, but our friends at John Deere need to contact the John Deere National Company, because this can't be the first time in the history of John Deere that a dealer has had this problem, and, you know, these are, we are a home rule county, we're a home rule state, we cannot annex you, you have to annex in, and because of the sins of our forefathers, that wa, that water and sewer goes right past you, and why we didn't make everybody go in the beginning, I don't know, but there has to be some, something that, that the company has done somewhere, there has to be some outreach somewhere that someone might be able to say, hey, you know, we found this in this county, or we found this in, in that state, just to see if there's, if there's anything that, that they might, some light day may be able to shed onto it. I'm amenable to some sort of discount for you, given what you're gonna have to pay to run it from the road to the building, the retrofitting of the building. I, I, I get that, and because it's not manufacturing, you're not gonna be able to come back here at, at, at the end of the year and ask for those sorts of things. So, if, if there's any way we can find some common ground in the middle, to be honest with you, and I'm, I, I respect Mr. Heath so much, I'm not really worried about trying to sound pro-business. I'm trying to worry about sounding pro wastewater treatment plant, is what I'm trying to do, because that's where the cost is, pro-amanda, actually, not necess, some parts of sustainability. So, if you could check with them to see if they have any suggestions at that level. So if you could check with them to see if they have any suggestions at that level. There has to be an outreach of the corporation somewhere.
To answer the mayor's question, I think that we, we can, even if we have to have a special meeting just to resolve this, we should be able to do it next, for the next two weeks.
I don't, yeah, I, I wouldn't think that we'd need a special meeting. Just, I'm thinking two weeks gives staff time to pull together answers.
Fine.
It gives staff time to potentially draft or outline some scenarios, you know, and maybe alternatives, compromise. And certainly gives you all time to make, you know, consideration of the same issues. Or, you know, potentially not make any judgment and just come back when we've got some of those things on paper to consider. You know, I'd, I'd hate to, to invest that time, have you say, "Forget it, we're pulling the annexation request."
I can't necessarily tell you that, that with all those numbers, I can make a commit, I mean, you know, that I, that I personally can say I'm for it or against it. I mean, I can't...
Well, I, I think that I hear, though, the people, the majority of the, of the council that's here, including April, want to find a solution. And, and that's what, given the, given the two weeks, that will give them the time to pull their recommendations together and then come back to us.
Okay.
Is that worth, worth doing it? That's, that's the best we're gonna be able to do today.
I think that's, has the potential to be progress, and in any event, is a good next step.
Okay. Then we have, we will, Mr. Mayor, you can work with...
Yeah, or Keith and Amanda and Julie and I will work on this.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And please don't, you know, we're, we're trying to do the right thing. Sometimes it's harder than others.
I understand. I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Right.
And just, I, I was trying to get information regarding inventory-only tax and was not able to gleam it. So the unintended consequences of other in-town businesses, I wasn't able to determine. So that'd be a big help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Mr. Holland.
Okay, thank you. See you.
Next up, we have Amanda, Amanda's dancing.
All right.
Critical area commission.
Yes, good evening. It's a very interesting long meeting tonight. Thank you for your patience.
I just said to the mayor that this is actually, from a, from a intellectual standpoint, from a elected person's standpoint, the issues that are presented in front of us, I find fascinating and intriguing. I will say that the John Deere fourth quarter profits in 2018 were $785 million, and they're all of 2018 profits were 2.36 billion.
Billion.
So what they're sending back to, to the home store for whatever, I guess, I'm not sure how they're, do you have any idea what they're...
But because people probably listen to this, we should clarify that Atlantic Tractor is not John Deere.
Yeah.
But, but they have to pay John Deere to buy the original equipment. So I don't mean to disagree with you, but I think they're exactly John Deere.
I don't think it works that way.
No, trust me, it doesn't. When it comes down the chain, I've been at the end of the food chain. It's not pretty.
Yeah, you know who's at the low end of that totem pole?
You know who's paying out.
It's our, it's our people locally who are not...
It's our paying out, yeah.
It's just frustrating.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I am so frustrated because we're gonna come up against this thing every single time, over and over again. And we're gonna be sitting here when all of our people are being dual taxed.
Yeah.
It's not right, and it's gotta be resolved, and...
I wish that sometimes I had a little bit more sympathy for people who swore up and down in the last 50 years, "I'm not going, if that's not double taxes, I'm not do, sorry, now you're gonna want us." And the funny part of that is, I didn't say this because when we look at our environmental, that whole east side...
Oh, yeah.
That runs into the tributary, that runs into, 'cause this, that particular thing's probably gonna empty over into Parker and then into Shoemaker.
Right.
As well. I was trying to figure out where it would go in the watershed in terms... The question we didn't ask, and now that Mr. Holland's gone, "Does anybody know if the county has given them a timeline?"
I don't think so. I don't think they actually have that formal letter yet that says, you know, "You have to replace by this time." I don't think they're under consent order that I know of. You know, I haven't seen that kind of threatening letter yet. I think they're, they've been asked, and the health department will traditionally say, "Can you connect, connect to municipal services?" And of course, municipal services are in front of their property. So this was a natural first step, which is probably why they don't know what it would cost to replace, because the health department doesn't want them to do that. Their preference is to connect.
I'm convinced we can come up with a solution.
Nor, nor do, nor does the city, by our policy and plans, want them to have a septic system. We want them to annex.
Absolutely.
You know, by our, by our charter, by our policy, by, you know, I mean...
What's right.
Right, right, exactly.
And we want, right, we want all of those adjacent. The question is, how do you have a fair and equitable plan to do it?
Does the clerk have any, Kim? I, I was just wondering, and I don't know, it may be a shot in the dark, or just a reaching or grabbing or anything. But when we ran water and sewer all the way out to Warwick, I'm wondering if there was anybody that had any discussions about what happens when those parcels that line up on it...
My, my guess would be...
Yeah.
It was sized, it was sized correctly for all those parcels. I mean, we, you know, the thought was eventually that was in the growth area. So the, the lines are sized correctly. So that's not an issue.
Well, that doesn't help me, because if the lines are sized and we knew it and they knew it...
Why didn't they at the time?
'Cause they don't have to.
Because they didn't.
It's the old...
The sins of the forefathers, yes, I get it.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome. What's this one?
Since we're on this topic, can I just add that...
Sure.
The, the other thing looming that I alluded to, that we're gonna have to deal with in this conversation, is that the county's water and sewer master plan that's been awarded to GMB, that is under development, is this plan that is supposedly going to figure out water and sewer service for 100% of the county. So for all of the unserved portions of the county with water and sewer. The question is, how are they gonna pull that off? Who knows what GMB is gonna propose? But there are only a couple options. And it's basically either connect to municipal services, build a whole separate system, including a new wastewater treatment plant, which, oh, by the way, we absolutely know, the state will never allow. And, and as much as down the hall they may claim like, "Oh, sure, that's possible," no, it is not. It is, it is absolutely never possible. But the, the second actual pathway is that they could, you know, spray treat, right? I mean, they could, you know, package plant treat. And I know, I learned Amanda doesn't like that term, but they could essentially spray it, you know, around the county and, you know, run and own their own pipe system.
It's very costly.
And very costly and not...
Where would they get their water from?
Well, that's another, I mean, build, build water treatment plants?
So in our code...
How do you just get the water?
Well, but if you think about it, in our code, we require water and sewer service. They may not. You know, if they're looking at a health emergency for septic systems, they could only do sewer. You know, they don't have, they don't have that same requirement on themselves that they have to do.
So the bottom line is anywhere where, that's within our, within the...
Reachable.
Right.
Yeah, anywhere that's within our municipal growth element, identified for growth, which is also, by the way, the county's growth area around Salisbury. Those areas, we need to have a very, I think, relatively quick conversation over the next few years, and come to some plan of how are we going to provide them with municipal services? That's what it comes down to. And for us, that means annexation.
I keep thinking, I mean, Old Earth City where is an easier one because it's mostly houses. Like, I'm going down Old Earth, I went there for a funeral today, and I'm going, I'm going down the road going, "Is there anybody, is there anybody..." This is on silent, I wanna say to you, but it is on silent.
It's possessed.
Is there anything, as you go out there, because that's where they're gonna fail.
Right.
They're gonna fail on...
Small lots.
They are failing.
No replacements.
Atlantic Pacific, they, they are failing. Woodcrest, right now.
Yeah.
Out that way.
But those, but those particular homes have the cost to get it in upfront, but don't have this extra, this extra business.
Burden on them.
Burden on them.
The tax burden on them.
Yeah.
Because you, because you're cryptic, there's so many more. What I'm doing in my head is trying to go, I'm going through the math going, "Hmm, I wonder where the mayor, I wonder where they are. It's gonna be like a game with you to see if I guess."
You could probably guess before I could. But, but, but the, you know, I think that the question is, in an area like that, there's also less potential to collect a return, right? I mean, 'cause you're talking about small lots, you know, low va, lower value properties. You know, it's, it's scary what that looks like.
Yeah.
And, and now that the state has a funding mechanism, and that's been announced to us, correct, formally.
Right.
Now that the state BRF dollars, the thing that paid for wastewater treatment plants around the state upgrades, now that those dollars are allowed to run pipe, to extend sewer services to these places, there's a funding source. So there's money. Now, it's not all the money you need.
Right.
So that's some of it. Then you gotta finish it, then you gotta maintain it, then, you know, you gotta actually make the connection to the house. Yeah, then you gotta maintain it for years, then...
And that's sewer, not water.
And that's sewer. And that's ignoring, right, that's ignoring the other pipe.
Right.
And, and oh, by the way, then, you know, ask this question, you're annexing all these areas? Are you upgrading all the roads to city standards? Are the, if the streets are coming in?
Streetlights.
Streetlights, police, fire.
Curbs, gutter.
Right.
Sidewalk.
It's a big discussion.
It's not simple.
It's not simple.
It's not simple.
It's not simple.
Agreed.
So, so I'll transition to hopefully a simple topic.
Transition, transition to a...
Maybe.
More amenable subject.
So the last topic today is critical area commission. So the state of Maryland has the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area legislation that was adopted in 1984. For the most part, counties administer critical area commission legislation. From talking to our Critical Areas Commission staff about a year ago, they brought up, "Hey, why isn't the city doing this themselves? Did you know you can?" Because we have a lot of projects right now that are in critical area. The Marina, 500 Riverside, everything, even up the amphitheater, the beer garden, Lot 16, you know, so...
Everything on the river.
Everything on the river. So they actually posed the question, we started digging into it. And now that the city has a dedicated city planner and planning staff, we have begun the process of transitioning to take over these responsibilities of review and being the agency that coordinates with Critical Area Commission, instead of having Wycomico County Planning and Zoning do that function anymore. So Critical Area staff worked with the legal department, Mark's team, to draft this enabling ordinance, which essentially gives us the right to administer our, the, these regulations. The bulk of the changes is changing the names of the department. The other major change throughout is that COMAR references have changed. So our codes are actually a little bit outdated referencing COMAR. So that is done throughout. And then finally, the third change is at the end, it gives us the right to charge fees for our plan review, fees in lieu of. So we would still have to set those fees as we would traditionally with other fees and with, at budget time. But this would give us the right to charge those fees. And, and then frankly, being that we are administering this program now, we would then have the control over how to use those. So when someone can't necessarily meet all the critical area requirements on their property, they're allowed to pay a fee in lieu of. Because there are some rules that Critical Area has that's even more stringent than the stormwater code. They have a 10% phosphorus rule that sometimes, depending on the situation, that's beyond typical Maryland stormwater code. So if they can't meet it, they do have the right to pay a fee in lieu of. We then have the ability to use that money for environmental projects. And in meeting with Critical Area staff, one of the questions I posed, because they want to see, if you collect money, they wanna see it spent in a very timely manner. And so I had asked if that was eligible for use for, say, this Chesapeake Bay Trust grant program that we're partnering with? And they said, "Absolutely. They have other jurisdictions that turn that fee around, let Chesapeake Bay Trust manage it every year, and make sure projects are happening." So, so, you know, not here today to decide how to use the fee or even set the fees, but what we're looking at today is the enabling ordinance to let the city take over this program. We're now the liaison between developers who are developing in the critical area and the Critical Areas Commission. We meet with them regularly, and we have been for the last few months, review all the projects. They have checklists and, and, you know, helpful, helpful planning devices that we then use and submit to them. And actually, one thing that they had recommended was going and talking to another city that does their own program, and Ocean City is who they recommended. So the city planner and I went to Ocean City and met with their staff that administers the Critical Area program, and it was fantastic. It is very, very well done. They've had this program, obviously, for years. I think everything in Ocean City is in Critical Area, 90-some percent of it. So it was a phenomenal program, and it gives us a lot of great ideas on how we could administer the program. It was very impressive. They could pull up and show exactly what every dollar for fee in lieu of has been spent on every year, and how it trends and whatnot. So, so this is, what we're presenting today is, is the enabling ordinance.
April?
Hello?
I hate going.
Yes.
Hate to break it up.
I just, you know, I'm just, given, given the last discussion, I'm just over here, it just, it's, it's going real fast.
Hey, that's good. Do we have consensus on this?
Yes.
Okay. We have consensus, thank you.
Thank you.
This is the final one.
Wow. Okay.
You know what we also should probably do is ask MML, MML has any of, any of these issues, the same sort of issues, what other municipalities did. Because we're all in the same, we all look like an ink blot, the way it's, the, because of the way it's been annexed. And there are so many of our counties that have rural just outside.
Yeah. Okay. Anything for the good of the order?
God, what a good meeting.
Oh, she gonna say something about Josh Copeland?
Yes, I sure am here. He's one of two finalists.
Right, I heard that.
So this is, pass your vote between now and Saturday. DEP votes Sunday's best for Josh Copeland.
Everyone Copeland's one of the finalists, so good for him.
Thank you.
Wish him luck.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. If there's no, nothing else, we are adjourned.